Welcome to tonight's Planning Board meeting. Can we please rise for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, before I start, is there some paperwork I need for the actual motions?
They should be there at your desk.
Oh, thank you, I got them. Okay, thank you. With that, would you like to call the first case?
Sure.
First item on the agenda is case number PB 1610-1. Upon the matter of request by McMahon Leroux, acting as agent for Bayfront North LTD for a wetland environmental protection overlay district permit to install shoreline rip wrap to the community parking lot with site-related improvements near Promises 265 Bayfront Lane North in an R3 residential district.
Good evening, my name's Greg McMahon with McMahon Leroux. I'm here representing Bayfront North Homeowners Association. Also here tonight to address any questions you might have for them is Frank Fardino, who represents the homeowners association. The EPod permit we're requesting is a wetland EPod permit. We have applied to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for a permit to install new additional rip wrap along the shoreline. This was done a number of years ago, but erosion is slowly eating away at their parking lot, so the plan is to reinforce the existing rip wrap and also pave the existing parking lot. DEC reviewed this, and the one condition they put on paving the parking lot is that it be done with pervious asphalt. The permit has been issued by the DEC, and as part of that, as part of the town requirements, we're here to seek an EPod permit. I would like to mention, and in the workshop I didn't mention this, but it came to my attention, I had talked to town staff last week, the homeowners association is intending to install a security gate at the entrance of the parking lot, just the typical pass code up-down gate. I talked to the town, they weren't aware of any permits or approvals required for that, only that it be coordinated with the fire marshal for emergency access. And I just mentioned that as an aside, it wasn't necessary to gain any approvals from the DEC for that. It's, again, strictly just a same gate that they have at the entrance for the Point Pleasant condo, same type of gate. But with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or the owner would be glad to answer any questions you may have for them.
Okay. So, thank you for going over it at the workshop. So, we'll start with Mike.
I do not have any questions at this time.
Rich?
I thought we had a good discussion at the workshop. I find it, you know, we talked a little bit about the use of the live willow stakes, and I thought that was a really interesting implementation and a way to cover up the rip wrap for voters' view, and it also accomplishes a great deal of good, so I don't have any specific questions at this time.
Thank you for providing the information to us. The, you don't need our approval, I just have a question because I drove down there. The gate is going to be, the gate that's on the Point Pleasant project is actually a full gate that opens and closes this way, is my recollection. Is that what you guys are proposing?
I should let the owner speak to that, I wasn't involved in the design. Frank, do you want to come up and just address your gate?
Good evening, Frank Fardino, 323 Bayfront Lane North. It's actually a traffic control device, so it's an arm.
It's an arm that'll go up and down, okay. The erosion that's happening on the west side of the parking lot, is that going to be mitigated in some fashion? There are piles of gravel down there and things at this moment.
Right. We haven't had any problems with it since the landslide that we had that was further north on the west side.
Okay.
So, we haven't had any problems with it, and it's, you know, nothing that we've discussed at this point.
Okay, so there is a problem with the slope there?
Uh...
Or has been?
Has been.
Okay, and that's been corrected?
Was corrected, and the town highway department was just down there the other day marking trees because they're going to be doing some trimming, so that sunlight can come in, so vegetation can grow to stabilize that hill.
Okay, and then finally, on the pervious pavement, which I applaud you guys for doing and going along with the DEC on that, how is that going to be maintained so it remains a viable topping for the drive?
I'm not sure, because I'm not the expert on that one. Our contractor will hopefully give us instructions on how to maintain it, what we need to do to keep it up.
I see in your architect behind you...
I could probably address that. I think what we'll include in a recommendation to the owners is that at least get power vacued at least once a year, probably in the springtime, to remove any of the typical road dirt, especially in the wintertime, you get a lot of road dirt that accumulates, and so I think from, at a minimum, it would probably be once a year to just have it power vaced out.
Great, and we could help you with that? By asking that to be a condition of the approval?
I don't think that's an issue, no.
Great, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Mike?
I'm fine with everything as is, thank you.
Well, I was absent, so I'm just catching up now.
Long for the ride.
Brett?
I thought all of my questions were answered at workshop, so...
Yeah. Bernie, in all fairness, since we were all real comfortable with all the work that we got accomplished at the workshop, is it prudent to take a minute or two to just summarize what the workshop was, how it went, and what the developer did to, I mean, it's just, it's come together nicely, and it sounds like we're just skimming over the top and saying, hey, here you go, but I don't want anyone out in TV land to think that.
So, for the purposes of the public, we, for every case that we see, we do do a workshop prior to, so that the board can go over in detail with the applicant all of the specifics of the project. And in this particular project, the applicant brought forth the specifics. So, if you don't mind, could you just give a high-level overview of what we're trying to achieve there and why for the public, so that they can understand?
Well, again, the reason for the project that we went to DEC for a permit was initially to reinforce the edge of where the parking lot meets the bay, which is undergoing erosion, specifically springtime. It's slowly washing into the parking lot, so the intent was is to reinforce the break wall. It's really not a wall, it's rip wrap, rock rip wrap, which is really, at this point in the juncture, is all the DEC is willing to permit. And along that break wall, they've required that we install willow stakes, which are a live, and I'm not a landscape architect, but it's a live stick that goes into the rock, and they eventually take root, and it's not willow trees, it's more of a bush that intertwines within the rip wrap and the ground to reinforce the rock slope. And along with that, the owner decided that, over the years, it's been basically a crushed stone parking lot there, and they'd like to pave that parking lot to help with maintenance, better able to delineate parking, and provide a smooth surface for the parking, so we proposed that to the DEC, and their only, well, their requirement was is that it be a pervious asphalt, as opposed to a normal asphalt, to allow some infiltration down through the asphalt into the existing rock base that underlies the parking lot. And so, the owners agreed to do that. DEC then issued a permit. We also have letters, we had to gain approval from the New York State Department of State and the United States Army Corps of Engineers. All three parties are part of this permit process. And the last step is why we're here tonight, and that's obtaining an EPod permit from the town for work within the town's wetland EPod. As I say, the purpose of this parking lot is that there's a community of residents down there that live on the bay north of the Point Pleasant condos, and these homes are not accessible by road, and this parking lot, right at the beginning of the development, provides them with a location to park their cars and then walk to their specific homes.
And just to clarify, so I understand, although it's called a community parking lot, this is a private parking lot?
It is.
For the use by the homeowners association members and their guests, and this project, although you're seeking an EPod permit, it's being undertaken and paid for by the members of the homeowners association?
Oh, yes, yeah. There are actually four, I'll refer to them as tax account parcels, that comprise this parking lot. All four of those parcels are owned by Bayfront North Limited, which is the homeowners association. So, all of the work takes place on the private, on the homeowners association parcels. All of this work is paid for by the homeowners association.
I have a, can I ask a question that we just brought up before a little bit? The rocks that are coming in to be the creative part of this, just curious, is it sold by how big the rock is, how wide the rock is, is it by the foot, or is it just by how many tons?
Well, the rocks, we're talking about a heavy rip wrap, which is based on the size, typically the size and the minimum size and weight of the particular rocks are delivered from the quarry by truck, and typically they're set in place, one or two at a time.
Yeah.
Usually by a hydraulic backhoe.
Okay.
So, that's not, it's not a truck that just backs up to the shoreline and dumps rock out.
No, no.
These are all pretty much hand-placed.
That we knew, we were just, we were just curious about, how does anybody ever get billed for something like that?
Billed?
Billed, but, no, no, it's, by the way, you said that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks, thank you, just my curiosity.
And just one more question, when are you planning on doing all this, what's your schedule?
Well, I believe, well, we're probably well past, or not well past, but by the time this rip wrap is placed, which could be this fall and winter, early winter, they would be in line for paving next paving season. We're really at the end of the 2016 paving season right now.
Thanks.
Okay. At this time, I think we'd like to open up the public hearing to see if there's anybody who would like to speak on this matter. Sure, come on up, please state your name, and before you do that, I did forget one piece of parliamentary rules. If there is an emergency, I want to point out that the exits are on the left-hand side of you, in case you have to leave in an emergency. And when we open up the public hearing here, please, when you approach the podium, give your name and address, and then speak to us. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Patty Brody, I live at 277 Bayfront Lane North, which is the first house closest to this parking lot. I, just for the record, I don't believe that this is a homeowners association, I think this is an association that owns a parking lot. The homes are not part of the homeowners association, nor in control of the association, just the parking lot. The people who live in the homes are members of the association that own a parking lot. Just, does that...
I think that clarifies it.
Yes, I've got nods from my colleagues here.
Thank you.
Does that, I don't know if that makes a difference, but...
It's like a pool.
Because you kept on saying homeowners association. I didn't see a map tonight, so I'm not quite sure that everybody here is aware of exactly what is going, what it's going to look like. About 12 years ago, there was a project where the DEC gave an approval to put a wall, a rip wrap wall in, and that's about the time that I moved into the neighborhood. Subsequent to the installation of that wall, the DEC informed the association that they were in violation because they had gone more than eight feet beyond the permitted permit. And as a result of that, the association gained land for parking. The board at that time said, you know, we had no control over that, it was the contractor who put rocks in, and they did not fall where they should have fallen, they were rocks, and they went. So, at the end of that project, we had a straight line from my house, which is at the north end of the parking lot, to the south end of the parking lot of rip wrap, that was more than eight feet out from the permit. Over the years, that straight line has eroded, so now it looks like where it was installed, straight out, and then it comes into the west about three or four feet, then it goes straight out, and it comes in two or three feet, then it goes straight out. It didn't, it didn't, the whole wall did not erode, but there is considerable erosion that has eliminated, that has impacted the parking lot. Now, I want to go back to the date of the original permit. At that time, because of the violation to that permit, we were able to gain two or three parking places along the bay because we had extra land. I asked the question, and I haven't received an answer, and I'd like an answer tonight. With this new permit, are we going to repair what's existing where it has eroded, or has the DEC required us to correct the violation from 12 years ago and start the project from that point on? Will the parking lot get smaller? And maybe Mr. McMahon could answer that question, and then I'll ask a further question on that.
Why don't you ask all your questions, because at the end, the applicant can come back up and address all your questions.
Well, I need to know, because in my conversations with the DEC, they are requiring us to take back to where we were originally, and I just want to make sure that that is, in fact, the case, that we would be losing land, and that we would, in fact, be losing parking spaces. We added three parking spaces as a result of the violation. Will we keep those parking spaces? So, I would like that question addressed.
Is there anything else?
I don't know, I might come back. I think that's it, thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board?
I'm Tommy Adams, I'm with Point Pleasant Estates, and they keep saying that this land is owned by the homeowners association. We own that land, we own that parking lot, according to the tax map, unless someone can show me something different.
So, when you say "we," you mean Point Pleasant?
The Point Pleasant people own that land.
I was just going to ask that question. Do you pay the taxes?
It's part of the tax map that I'm looking at here.
So, are you saying they're doing a project on your land?
Sort of, yeah.
Well, either it's your land or it's not your land.
Well, it is, yes.
Is there...
From what we can tell from the tax map, yes.
Have you ever done anything to dispute that?
We have, we just got notified last week about it, and a lot of our members are out of town, and we're trying to contact them.
Which tax account numbers are you referring to specifically?
77.2701-25, I think.
That is shown on our map as your tax parcel, but not where this work is occurring?
No, correct me if I'm wrong, but...
I think you're looking at...
No, no, no.
I need someone, I need someone a little more.
Yeah, Mike, could you?
Thank you.
If you have any other comments, you can continue with those while I take a look at this.
Okay, the other concern is, and again, we were just notified about this, but there's a boat ramp on the corner there, and it belongs to Point Pleasant, and we've been informed by an insurance company, it's a big liability for us, and no one really uses it, other than, who knows who uses it. We'd like to close that off and make it part of this project, if possible, but we need the approval of all our members to say that. Again, a lot of them are out of town, and we're in the process of contacting, we just found out about this last week. So, we'd like to eliminate that boat ramp because of the liability.
If I could just ask Ms. Ivers, were the normal notifies sent out to adjacent property owners because of the planning board action?
It was, so Michelle, as board secretary, does a minimum of 200-foot mailer around here. What I will say, though, in reference to the comment just made about the boat launch, that is outside of the project area that was contemplated by DEC, so the, if you see the, what I'm going to refer to as sort of the thick or dark hatching area shows the limits of the project area, and the parcel, the parcels in question for this application, the boat launch that's being referenced by the gentleman is outside of that area and was not contemplated with respect to the DEC. So, that would be a separate action that night, at some point, if...
You could make it a part of this action?
You know what, unfortunately, DEC is very specific about the things that it's looking at when an application is made, and so you can't make a change after the fact and do more work than was originally described or defined in the application to DEC. And it's also, at least looking at the map here, the boat ramp is actually associated with, and I'm looking, with a different tax account, with a different tax parcel, tax ID, and so it's a separate parcel altogether. So, even though that area down there all looks like it's one big parcel, that, where the boat launch is located, it looks like it's associated, and again, I'm looking very quickly, but it looks like it's associated with a separate tax ID number, a different parcel. And Deputy Town Attorney, if you would let me know if you're reading of them, I'm looking at the application, the map that was submitted in the application. The one dated and stamped as received on October 14th, 2016.
And Carrie, I'm looking at a deed that the applicant's representative handed me, and when he returns to the podium, I just have some questions about this as well.
Any other questions at this time?
So, if we wanted to close the ramp, we'd have to go through the DEC?
I'd be happy to give you more information if you want to, after the meeting, I can give you my contact information, so I can direct you to the right contact person to initiate that action, if that's something that you're interested in, so you understand what the review process might be.
It seems like a public ramp, everybody seems to be using it, other than our property owners there, so...
Well, certainly, that's something we can help you address with DEC, and then subsequently with this planning board, because similar to this application, you'd be coming before this board to get approval for the EPod permit needed, more than likely, associated with the action.
So, we could not make this part of the...
Unfortunately, no, as wonderful and convenient as that would be, DEC has a pretty set limit on applications and modifications, once approval has been issued.
Yeah, I can...
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board? Could the, come back up, so we can ask some more questions.
Would like me to, I could first address the lady's question regarding the shoreline?
Please.
I wasn't involved in the original placement of rip wrap, our firm wasn't involved, but I am aware of, through all my conversations with DEC, their concerns from the last time rip wrap was placed, and the extending it beyond their point. They were very specific with us when we applied for, or granted this permit. There's a line shown on the plan, which is the maximum extent that the rip wrap can be installed on the shoreline into the bay, and they were very insistent that they will enforce that limit, and it's a straight line, and I think it takes the extent of the rip wrap back to where 12 years ago, or whenever that took place, where it should have been placed. However, they are not going to require that the contractor go into the bay and start excavating materials out of the bay, that would be, cause more problems than it would solve, but the extent of this rip wrap has been controlled by DEC and their approval of the plan.
Can you just explain what four parking spots are being referred to? Are those the northernmost parking spots, or...
I really don't know, I mean, there are no, there are no striped parking lots in the gravel lot, there are signs for, I don't know if they're house numbers or residence where they park, and I don't know how many spaces they had prior to the first placement of rip wrap, but, I mean, they use all available space in their parking lot to get the cars in, it's not a, it's not like going to Eastview Mall with nice striped spaces, they, you know, there are, they have to maximize the use of a limited parking lot, but, so I can't speak to that. With regard to the parcels, that question came up during the application process, as I mentioned, there are four parcels. Three of the parcels are clearly in the tax records, shown to be owned by Bayfront North Limited. The fourth parcel, which the gentleman was just referring to from the Point Pleasant Homeowners Association, took us a little investigation. I provided the town attorney with a copy of the deed, that parcel was deeded from the Point Pleasant Homeowners Association to the Bayfront North people in 1996, I believe, so approximately 20 years ago, that parcel was transferred by deed.
Yeah, the follow-up question I have to that is, your site plan makes reference to parcels that end in 80, 71.1, 72, and 73. The deed you handed me references parcels 71, 72, and 73, so it doesn't necessarily square with parcel 80 and 71.1. Do you know any of the background on those two parcels?
I don't, no.
Okay.
But the map, that, it... But the, the map, that, it, it appeared, again, I just, we just copied that map off the county's website, or that deed off the county's website, the map that's enclosed with that deed was prepared by Sir Brown back, I think probably at the time they were doing work on the homeowner for the Point Pleasant, and that, that map clearly shows, I think, the parcel that was in question.
So the one in question is the largest parcel?
The largest parcel. The other three parcels, which are small pieces, are, are contained in the tax records and very clearly the ownership is to Bayfront North Limited.
I, I guess I have a question, just looking at the map. If you look at the far south end of the riprap, that appears to be extending beyond the dotted line, is that riprap going on to the Point Pleasant Homeowners Association property, such that if we approve this, work is going to be occurring on somebody else's property?
It's not intended to, it, it's intended that the riprap will stop at the property line. We can correct that, but it's, we, we are not, at this time, the permit strictly pertains to the lands owned by the Bayfront North Limited, and there's no, no intent to work onto the, any other land.
And was this map that we're reviewing, was that provided as part of your DEC application showing that area?
It is, yes, yeah. It's just an overrun, they didn't question it, but there is no, no intent to work on other people's property.
And that's, I just, I don't want to approve something and subsequently have a property line fight during the middle of your construction.
No, no, there's no intent.
I, I guess my, my next question is, is how effective is going, you know, in that very southernmost area, if you cut off that riprap that's on the next property over, how effective is the riprap going to be for that first little area, or is it going to end with property dropping in and creating the same problem that you've got now? Or erosion issues with waves?
Again, I, you know, ideally, it would be nice to continue it all the way across, but we can't, we can't apply for a permit on somebody else's property, I think if the, if the homeowners association wants to abandon their boat launch and do some work there, they're going to have to apply for their own permit with DEC and, and proceed in the same method and manner that we have proceeded.
And it would be nice if they did that, because now you're going to, you're going to connect up that riprap to the brick and wood wall that's existing on their property, and it just would flow much better.
And, and I'm, I'm, if, if they did remove that ramp, DEC would probably require that that riprap be wrapped around the corner and, again, tied into that wood wall.
So to build on Rich's questions, could this have an adverse effect on that, or not?
Maybe over a long term, I don't see anything immediate with that. Again, most of the erosion that we're seeing is in areas to the north of that.
So the, the detail that's shown on the shoreline stabilization plan that I'm looking at, where the proposed riprap encroaches over onto that parcel 25 owned by Point Pleasant HOA, that would be removed on the drawings?
I'll revise the drawing before they come in for signature.
And just so I understand, DEC cannot issue a permit, I mean, if you were to enter into an agreement with the adjoining property owner, could you then make that part of this application or not?
I don't believe so, I, if, if we, we, we could probably go through a process to amend the permit, it, I mean, the, the process to obtain this permit is taking us probably nine or 10 months.
Right.
I would, you know, I would imagine you could amend the permit with a letter of authorization for work, for two, there would have to be two applicants on the permit, and it would probably be, again, and then the, I don't know the mechanics of it, but it just couldn't be done quickly, it would, I'm sure, take some time.
I, I just, my, my worry is water and silt do crazy things, and I'm, I'm just worried that this, this drawing went to DEC, but doesn't match what the wording of your application were, I mean, I, I like it much better the way you have it on the map. I'm just afraid, what, if anything, this is going to do to the boat launch area, if, and I understand, you know, that's a separate property, but, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking out loud here, I, I'm just worried that your map doesn't match your wording for your application to DEC.
Well, whatever we do, could we not just make anything contingent upon that factor having been cleared up and new maps were proposed, I mean, just, can we just do that?
Yeah, I, you know, and I think the answer is, I, I don't know, I imagine DEC is going to look at this, and they're going to say, yeah, you can, we can't give you a permit to work on somebody else's property, they, I just need them to be sure that the way this is designed, that they're, they're happy with it.
I know you'd like it to be cleaner, and, and maybe the attachment to that would be, but if, if it's going back to square one...
Yeah. And I don't want that.
Yeah, I, you know, and again, they're only, this is their own property, they're trying to do this for, I mean, it's, you know, we're working on a project up on Lake Ontario, where we're having shoreline erosion for a, a resident, the residents on both sides installed riprap on their property years ago, and, you know, that, that, they just, it would have been nice to riprap the whole shoreline, but it's really up to each individual property owner to address their issues on their property, and...
And I couldn't agree with you more, but, except for the fact that we've got a map in front of us that shows you doing work on somebody else's property.
Well, that, again, that may, I, it's, it'd take me, you know, I can just move that line parallel, or on top of the property line, and when that map comes into the town for signature, and we provide the copies, that'll, that'll, that'll comply with the property line right there, it won't show any work on the...
And I'm, and I'm certain DEC is going to be doing periodic investigations, you know, they're going to do site visits, and they're going...
They'll be expected, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay, I...
Good, good note, though.
And as far as we can tell, there's no overlap with the property deeding, right?
There doesn't appear to be, no, the, the parcel 25 that the, the speaker with Point Pleasant was referring to, is, is that...
I can see that to the south.
Yeah, so to the extent that the, the proposed improvements are removed that are shown on that parcel, I think his concern would be addressed.
Great.
But he was correct, that as currently shown, there are improvements proposed on their parcel.
Which that speaker couldn't speak on behalf of the association anyway, from his testimony.
Any more questions? Clarifications? Okay, with that, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Excuse me, Chairman, I'm so sorry, I want to just let you know that I do not have your, your Part Two and Three for the seeker, this is an unlisted action, are not in your packets, I do apologize, I realize that they are, our printers are being changed, and I did not print them out before that happened, so I do apologize, I can walk you through the environmental review that was completed for this project, if that's okay?
So the one we have is blank, is that what you're telling me, or we don't have it at all?
Well, you might have Part One from, that was submitted from the applicant, but Part Two and Part Three, I can, I can, once, once you've made your motion, I'd be happy to share with you the review that staff did with respect to the seeker.
So you want to do that before we make a motion at seeker?
Before.
We, I would defer to our Deputy Town Attorney.
I think we could take it up when they call the case and entertain motions, we don't have to do it now.
Okay.
This is for seeker?
Correct, for seeker, related to this item.
So the first thing we're calling is...
Seeker.
A motion for seeker, so would someone like to make a motion?
I would move that we do a negative declaration on PB 1610-1, regarding the installation of shoreline riprap to community parking lot with related site improvements near premises 265 Bayfront Lane North in an R3 residential district.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, sorry.
And with that, Carrie, could you please walk us through Part Two and Part Three?
Sure, I was just watching the dueling second happening up there, I apologize, I got sidetracked.
I'll get him next time.
I have to get to that mic faster. So in looking at, when you, in looking at, this is obviously an unlisted, so a short-form EAF was prepared, Part One, looking at the, this has, has no or small impact on land use and zoning regulations, it doesn't, won't change the intensity of use, it's essentially restoring facilities that are already in place and actually helping to ensure the environmental quality of the area and lands down there, the permeable pavement option is in the, will actually be a benefit to the, to the environment, and so, in looking at all of the 11 items that, that are addressed in the Part Two, it was, all of them were checked, no or small impact may occur.
Thank you. With that, is there any questions regarding the document we do not have in front of us? With that, can we have a motion for seeker? We already have the motion, can we have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Thank you. Okay, with that, somebody like to make a motion on this section?
And just to clarify, that was a motion and approval for a negative declaration, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
I could make the motion if you want, upon the matter, in case PB 1610-1, upon the matter requested by McMahon Leroux, acting as agent for Bayfront North Limited, for a wetland environmental protection overlay district permit to install shoreline riprap to community parking lot with site-related improvements near premises 265 Bayfront Lane North in an R3 residential district. I'd also add that we specify that lot maintenance take place at least once a year to ensure parking lot remains in good repair, and the potential of sediment runoff to the bay is minimized, and I would move that for approval.
I think there's one more.
Okay.
We asked for a revision of the shoreline stabilization plan to remove the riprap overflow to the Point Pleasant Association property, Lot 25.
Should we list that property?
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, the, the tax account number is 077.27-01-25.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I got this correct, proper lot maintenance of permeable pavement?
I've got, I've got that language right here, that I can share with you, but yeah, do you want me to read it again?
It's the vacuum, and you want to throw the, that, didn't they propose that vacuuming would be...
I think we're going to let it be open to any new technologies that may explore themselves in the future, that we're not limiting it only to vacuuming, that, that would be one solution currently, but if something better comes along, the idea is to keep the pavement permeable for the life.
I know, but, Ellen, if we, if we state it so that we're expecting it to be vacuumed, but if some technology comes along that's better than that, that's, that's great, but I'd hate to just think that they could just wash it off and call that maintenance.
I'm open to either or, I, I just didn't want to lock them into vacuuming, and that's the only thing that they're going to be able to do till they replace it, because they'll never come back here for our approval again.
No, you know, I, I don't know how to handle that. If, if, if some technique comes along in, in two, three, 10 years, that's, that's better than the vacuuming, I mean, it would be a hassle for them to come back here, but it would behoove them to, to, to take up the technology, because it's an advancement, I, I don't want to limit them to the vacuuming, but I don't want them to...
Can we say, in accordance with, you know, most effective industry-approved method?
Well, look at that.
Like that, I should have been a liar. Well, the other thing, the other thing you could do too, is should we have them check in with staff, or the code enforcement officer, prior to utilizing those methods?
That would be one way to ensure that the current best practice for maintenance of a permeable pavement is in accordance with town approval.
Or consultation with the building inspector.
Correct.
Yeah.
Just a phone call, probably.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have it, Mr. Chair?
Is it code enforcement or town staff? Code enforcement's fine, okay. So I have proper lot maintenance of permeable pavement, do I need the rest of it?
Oh, permeable pavement for sediment runoff to the bay is minimized.
And proper maintenance is in accordance with industry-approved methods, to be verified with the town staff. So with that, does anybody want me to reread those, or are we okay?
Yeah, go ahead, read it. No, 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 I'm all set.
Yeah, we're set.
So with that, would somebody like to make, can we take a, did I have a second?
You need a second.
We have a, Ellen made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
And you want me to record that, Rich, you were... Okay, with that, can we take a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. With that, we're complete, thank you.
That was a long, easy one.
Yeah, do I ever get an easy one? Okay, so, let me go back to...
That's her.
No problem. Since we're still continuing with the meeting, if everybody could please move into the hall to have your conversations, it would be greatly appreciated.
Hey, yo, guys! Get out!
Please, please move your conversations into the hall, thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly, you have such a way with words.
Not as well as you, my friend.
Hey, you guys.
Hey, you guys! My youth.
Since this is a very important, next thing we're going to address, Rich had to take a quick break, so I'm going to give him a couple seconds before we proceed. Thank you. With that, I'd like to make a motion to take off the table, item number, case number... case number PB 1603-3, which is upon the matter of request of Land Tech surveying and planning, acting as the agent for Lighthouse Point property. Oh, we lost Carrie. I'll continue reading the rest of it. Associates for the preliminary final site plan approval, Woodlot Environmental Protection Overlay District EPod Permit and Floor Plan EPod Permit to construct a 125-unit multifamily apartment development comprised of two four-story, 54-unit multifamily apartment buildings with ground-level parking and one three-story mixed-use building with 18 units of multifamily apartment development and 8,000 square feet of commercial space on first floor, a two-story clubhouse with pool and site-related improvements on premises 951 and 1027 Thomas Avenue and 45 Pattonwood Drive in an RH River Harbor District. Is there anybody that would second that?
No, not just yet. Would you do me something? 125 units, two buildings at 54?
Two four-story at 54-unit multifamily apartments.
Okay, that's 108. And how much is the rest? 18? How many other units?
18 units of multifamily apartment development. What does it add up to?
126. I think, if I have this, my math is good, I just don't know if I have the right numbers down. But we started off with it being 125 unit. We had 254 and then 18.
Excuse me, I'm just going to intervene. I think that the floor plan for the building has the interior floor plan. There were some variations, so that may be the cause. In other words, the difference, so it might be, might have been calculated initially at 125 and then they were able to modify a floor plan. I don't know if our deputy town attorney can address whether or not the, the calculation, we want to do the right math, so let's get the math right.
Yeah, so the calculation on the notice, it's off by one unit. So the 125 summary versus the breakdown, it's off by one unit, but I think that's because the project has evolved and there have been multiple iterations since it was originally noticed and added to the agenda, so I think that might be the discrepancy.
Well, you know, regardless of what it might be, I mean, it, it would be nice to have.
The math add.
To have, to have it right.
Yeah. So.
Pick a number, 125 or 126?
It's 125.
125.
Actually, you bring this up before, just in fact.
The site plan, can I have a view? The, the site plan is contained in the EAF, the revised site plan dated 6/28/16, so 14 units mixed-use building and then 52, 7 and 52 in the R development. So that's 111 plus 14, it's 125 total. That's in KFPI?
Yep. Yeah. So.
The cheap side of 10.
Yep.
So it was adjusted from what?
So it's, that would be two four-story, 52-unit multifamily apartment. It would be one three-story mixed-use building with 14 units. And then there's the two-story clubhouse with seven units, seven residential or dwelling units. And so that second line with the two-story clubhouse with pool and seven units would be the, the way to correct that.
So with that correction, Carrie, can you or Michelle reread what I'd like to take off the table?
Upon the matter of request by Land Tech Surveying and Planning, acting as agent for Lighthouse Point Property Associates for preliminary final site plan approval, Woodlot Environmental Protection Overlay District Permit and flood plain, flood plain EPod Permit to construct a 125-unit multifamily apartment dwell, development comprised of two four-story, 52-unit multifamily apartment buildings with ground-level parking and one three-story multi-use building with a 14 unit of multifamily apartment development and 8,000 square feet of commercial space on first floor, a two-story clubhouse with pool and site-related improvements.
The two-story clubhouse with pool and seven dwelling units.
Seven units.
Can we have a second?
On premises 951 and 1027 Thomas Avenue and 45 Pattonwood Drive in RH River Harbor District.
With that, can we have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The wrong motion.
Can we please take a vote on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. First matter of business we need to do is to declare ourselves lead agent for this project. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we make ourselves lead agent for case number PB 1603-3. Like to put that to a vote.
I'll second it.
I'll second, thank you. Then I'd like to put it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Anybody abstaining? Thank you. So Carrie, do we need to open up the seeker or do we go ahead to the question? Okay. With that, we'd like to start discussing part two and part three of the EAF. So I know you've prepared some materials to review.
Yes. And did Michelle distribute the most? Okay, so you've been looking at draft information or draft material related to the environmental review for this project. So there's a draft part two, a draft part three, and a draft part three narrative that's been prepared by collection of town staff and our town engineer. And for a moment, I'll just let you know that I've got Kathy Spencer here, who is from Lobella and specializes in environmental review and often assists with our more complex environmental review cases. And also Mike Chaffron, our town engineer is here as well, if there are any technical questions that you might have from an engineering standpoint as they relate to the seeker review. And so in that, without wanting to repeat what you've already been reviewing here, but for the benefit of those watching at home, the part two, this is a full environmental assessment form versus a short form. So the difference is a more detailed part two, taking you through a series of questions and taking a look at the information that the applicant has presented in their part one, along with their supporting documentation. And for the purposes of this project, I appoint you to the binder that was prepared and presented to the town in July of 2016. That is their EAF part one and the supporting documentation to go along with it. And so in, when we talk about reviewing the environmental impacts, we're looking at the information that was prepared and provided in that document and evaluating the, the impacts. And so in part two, we go through and answer, you know, there's, we said yes, if there is a potential impact on land. We said, yes, there's a potential impact on surface water. We said, yes, there's a potential impact on flooding. We said, yes, there's a potential impact on air. Yes, and potential impact on plants and animals. And as we continue going on, we say, yes, there's a potential impact on historic and archaeological resources. And then we also indicated that there was potential impact on, on transportation, noise, odor, odor and light, and human health. And I'm not getting to the very end. Also, potential impacts with consistency of plans, that's one of the areas we look at, and also with community character. And so in looking at those, that's the, this board's review of the material and identifying the potential places where an environmental impact might occur and indicating, and then the further analysis is determine whether the impact would be either none or small, or whether it could rise to the level of being moderate or large and without mitigation. So that's really the task of this board, is to take a look at each of the areas of potential impact and determine where there, if there are any large, significant adverse impacts. And so for this project, the very first thing that this board needs to consider is that, and we've been talking about it in depth over the course of the review process, is that this development site is located on a brownfield cleanup program site that's designated by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, otherwise known as DEC. And they have got a very stringent framework for how properties are entered into the BCP, which is the Brownfield Cleanup Program abbreviated, and then how they are monitored and, and processed through that program. In other words, any remediation that's being proposed on a brownfield cleanup site has to go through a very thorough review through DEC. And there's a myriad of documents that need to be prepared to demonstrate the existing conditions, to document the proposed remediation, to document what they're going to do as far as monitoring goes throughout the course of remediation and then after the fact, and also if there's any construction being proposed in conjunction with a brownfield cleanup program. There, there's a myriad of things that they do to look at that process. However, the remediation action itself is not subject to seeker review. So this board really just needs to focus in on the potential impacts associated with the site development that's being proposed. And I go back to the very long description that Michelle read to everyone just a moment ago, of that building that, and the site-related improvements that are being proposed. And so as we look at the potential impacts, we go through, recognizing that the remediation activity itself is exempt from this board's contemplation with environmental impacts, go through and look at the impact on land and determine whether or not there are going to be significant alter, adverse impacts associated with the alteration that's been proposed. And so in the part three narrative, we go through, you know, the potential, and we have to address to some extent the fact that there will be fill that is going to be associated with the site because clean fill is the proposed remediation method. So anything that isn't covered by a building or pavement of some sort will have, will have fill associated with it. So we're needing to look at the impacts associated with that. And then also recognizing that there is construction-related activity going on with the site development and what are the impacts of those. In looking through the, the impacts to land, the, the construction-related activity, so truck trips, you know, the, the activity of bringing the fill to the site and, or the other construction materials will generate truck trips. However, they will be, it won't be forever. It's a, it's a finite amount of time, estimated to be, at least according to the EAF part one, probably about four construction seasons. And so, and while that's going on, there'll be, because of the, by virtue of it being a brownfield cleanup program, there will be a whole site management and site monitoring plan that goes along with the BCP component. And so, in addition to the standard kinds of things that we might do to control, you know, sediment and construction-related impacts to the land, there's going to be the added protection that's afforded to this location because of the brownfield cleanup program. And I, I don't, again, so if we, if there's any, at any point, if there's questions that you had based on the review, this is a great time to.
I'm just going to, because you and I talked about it, in part DM?
Yep.
One.
Oh, hang on.
There's a conversation about six-year on the outside on their part one.
Damn. I'm sorry, I'm getting there.
D on part one.
What page? Can you point to the page number?
Yeah, it's page eight.
Okay.
The top of the page.
So they're proposing that it would be a four-year construction period anticipated. And so that, and if you look on DM, they're anticipating four years for this proposed site in, as, as described earlier.
My copy says, period is anticipated, dependent upon the unit demand and possibly five or six-year period if the project extends into Rochester.
Yeah, but as we've discussed before, that extension into the city of Rochester is no longer an option.
Four years is it?
The, correct.
Okay.
So, and just as a matter of clarification, the, this project has evolved from the original submission to now. And the only project that's being contemplated, the only development that's being contemplated would be for the development within the town of Aronacoid. And so that's all that this board is tasked with thinking about when it comes to the environmental impacts. Again, because the brownfield cleanup program, even though that encompasses the entire brownfield cleanup riverfront site, which is a 15-plus acreage that also extends into the city of Rochester's border, no development is being proposed there. So just cleanup activity would occur in that area outside of the town of Aronacoid.
So the four years would include the Rochester portion of the cleanup?
Correct. And I, and that's a great point for clarification. That's my understanding, is that the cleanup activity would be coincide with the site development. And that would also be dictated by DEC and the site monitoring program or the, and the, I'm not using the right terminology just now, but the remedial action plan and then the site management plan. I guess, I apologize, I'm using the wrong lingo for DEC.
I don't know their lingo, so I understood it.
Well, then I got it just right. Sorry.
Thank you. No, I just.
Sorry.
There was a discrepancy that I noticed earlier, and I just wanted to make sure that I don't recall seeing four years on the, on the part three.
Right. And then if you look at part, and if you look at part, and I did update, I believe there's a reference to the year, the anticipated construction time, and I did update it to reflect the four-year construction cycle. And they also indicate that same four-year timeframe on page three of the part one under D1E. It estimates where the, the starting of phase one and then the completion of the final phase, and that aligns with the four construction cycle. And when we talk about construction season, we're talking about typically spring into summer. So when, you know, the DEC form, you know, secret references the eighth month of 2017, that's referring to, to August and then the 11th month. So we're very, all of a sudden Victorian in our references to the time of the year. But you have to sort of calculate where we are in a construction cycle when you're referencing that timeframe. And so as we go through the part three, and again, not wanting to, you know, reiterate in great detail, because everybody's, you've all had an opportunity to review this at length, looking at, you know, the impact on surface water, there, there is going to be a stormwater pollution prevention plan, otherwise known as a SWIP, associated with this project because of the area disturbance. Anything over an acre requires that. Runoff from the buildings are going to be handled on-site and directed into town stormwater facilities. They are implementing quite a bit of green infrastructure with respect to this design. So there's permeable pavement, they're calling for the use of bioswells, for other stormwater management techniques that are going to help reduce the amount of stormwater that's actually running into or being managed by those on-site systems. And so it's not, you know, at this point, it's the, you know, the, one of the things that was pointed out is that there, you know, there's the, the, you know, infiltration, and I'm just, Mike, you might want to jump in here at some point, but as the onsite engineering is occurring, there are opportunities to mitigate the stormwater management through the. the SWIP, and New York State oversees that regulatory process as well. And I, and I think I'll point out again that there's a few green or sustainable practices of note. There's just under an acre of proposed permeable park, paving for the parking areas, they're using proposed green roofs, rain gardens, rain barrels, bio retention areas, and then there's a little bit more than two acres of green space proposed on the site. So, from a stormwater management perspective, not associated with any large adverse impacts. The onsite sewer, there's a, there are some engineering opportunities that may be needed when the time comes for the final engineering design, that the applicant's going to move forward, but there, again, our engineers reviewed and determined that there isn't a design solution that would mitigate or reduce any potential large impacts associated with the project. Looking at impacts of flooding, there is a very small portion of the site that's located in a flood zone that identifies it as having a 0.2 chance of annual flooding, otherwise known as a 500-year floodplain. However, there are no buildings being proposed for that small section of the site that's impacted. And so, again, with this project needing to comply and prepare a SWIP, that is also going to help address any potential issues with respect to impacts on, on the flood, flood zone. In looking at transportation, there was a transportation study and then a follow-up addendum included in the EAF. A traffic analysis was performed by SRF associates, looking at the, and again, this, we were evaluating the potential impacts of traffic. The traffic analysis that was presented back in July was actually anticipating a bigger project, and looking at the potential impacts of traffic at an even bigger scale than what's actually going to, what's being considered and reviewed. And it was determined that, based on the, the anticipated peak-generated trips, both for the morning and the afternoon of entering and exit, there wasn't deemed to be any large impacts associated with, either with conflict points, with blocking of lanes. I think they suggested there was one modification that the Monroe County DOT had advised, and they were going to be adhering to that required change from Monroe County DOT. This is, Thomas Avenue is a county roadway, and so, they have to meet county permitting requirements, and the county DOT didn't have any indication that there, they had any objection or questions about the traffic analysis as it was presented. Looking at impacts to noise, odor, and light, obviously, noise will increase during the construction period of time, but it was, it is a temporary condition during construction. It would be limited to the hours that are set forth in our town code with respect to our noise ordinance, so it would be conducted during, during business hours from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And then, you know, if, once the, once constructed, it's not anticipated that there'd be any significant noise associated with the development. However, if they were planning events or things like that, they'd have to adhere to this, the town's provisions for either special events or other permitting that might be needed to, you know, host a gathering.
Can they apply for a variance to work on Saturdays and Sundays?
That is a great question. I...
They can seek relief from the noise ordinance, yes.
If they, if they need to.
Yes. That would be a question for the ZBA?
Well, it's, if they were...
Or is that ministerial?
If, if weekend work was needed, that might be something that they would approach the town, and we would determine whether, whether or not they need to pursue approval from the ZBA.
And I would have to look at the noise ordinance. It also potentially could come from the Town Board, depending how the ordinance is drafted.
Yeah, so we'd have to look at the language on that to see if there's a deviation.
I was just thinking, because the extent of period that has transpired from their anticipated start time to...
The only thing I would point out, that typically Saturday and Sunday work comes at time and a half for contractors, and typically developers really don't like paying time and a half. So, I don't know if I'm jumping, if I'm speaking out of turn by answering for the developer, but...
I just want to make sure that the neighbors are aware that there's a potential...
Right, and, but I would, I would offer that there'd be some, some additional approval would be needed...
Right.
...in order to advance a Saturday and Sunday schedule. But, thank you, that's a... Yeah. Oh, that's, thank you. Michelle's just reminding me that, actually, our noise ordinance is enforced by the police, I, Aronacoid Police Department, so we would have to coordinate through them to determine how that works. So, we'll, we can find out the answer to that if Saturday and Sunday construction activity was anticipated at any time. As far as lighting goes, the site plan does include, obviously, site lighting and building-mounted lighting, the outdoor is proposed LED fixtures, and they'll, they've specified that they have contained shields to control light spill. Lights are downward-directed, and off-site light spill will not occur, as presented on the landscaping and lighting plan. They're not showing any, they're showing zero spill, which means zero light is exiting at the edge of the, edges of the property. The other, other thing I would point out is that they're, they're proposing adding landscaping and trees. There's also an existing tree line along the CSX railbed that provides some buffering and shielding of light from the development. There's also a topography difference, so, you know, the slope, the slope of the development site does actually go down, slope down from Thomas Avenue, so you, minimizes the potential for, for light impact. The, in looking at the historic, cultural, and archaeological service impacts, there was, the, there was a series of letters back and forth with respect to the archaeological significance or sensitivity of the site, but through the series of communication that occurred with the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, they determined that there were no further concerns at this location for archaeological resources, provided that a construction plan is put into place protecting all historic buildings within 90 feet of the proposed construction, and that they weren't anticipating the, there was a low potential for encountering archaeological artifacts because of the nature of the, the site and the fact that it's, it was man, sort of made land. In other words, it was man-made, man-filled, and so, very limited opportunity or chance that it would impact archaeological resources. Consisting with...
One question I do have on that point, though, is, we're going to protect the 1930s modern art house in some fashion that was mentioned?
So, that...
I know it's eligible, and it doesn't appear that it is registered currently.
Right, so, that, the, it's not, it's not registered currently, that would be something that the owner of the property would need to, and Rob, you can speak to that if I'm, if I'm not stating that correctly.
It's eligible for listing? It's on the list of eligible properties, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but it wasn't, and bear with me for a moment. They, in looking at that, the, they indicated that there is a national register-eligible building located adjacent to the development, so it's register-eligible?
991, right.
Correct. But they indicated that, that there would be no further concerns from SHPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Office, provided that a construction plan would be put in place to protect all historic buildings within 90 feet of the proposed construction. So, then, that would be something that would, the applicant would need to adhere to and make sure that they're not doing anything that's going to cause undue damage to the, to that property in question.
And to Carrie's point, SHPO's determination may have been different if the property was actually on the list and not on the eligibility list, of course.
And looking at the community plans or consistency with community plans, you know, the applicant provided information with respect to how it, you know, fit within the comprehensive plan guideline, the, and the other Pattonwood Plan, and also with the zoning of the River Harbor, River Harbor District. And so, that, we believe that it is consistent with the, the current plans, the comprehensive plan, the Pattonwood Plan, certainly the most recent comprehensive plan, this is, it's, this project is consistent with that and the type of development that's anticipated for this area of the town. But we do need to note that there is a, there would be an area variance associated with this project because it does exceed the density that's allowed within the zoning district. But that'll be something that the zoning board will take up with their application. They'll be addressing the, the density issue. But it is, it is consistent with the community plan and what's been envisioned for the, maybe the last 20 years or so for this area, for development. As a result of that, and it indicates that, you know, the EF Guide Workbook, which is sort of the holy gospel when it comes to looking at Seeker for these kind of, for any project in particular, but for more complex projects, it's really the go-to. The guidance suggests that when a community has specifically zoned the area for those new uses, and a project is consistent with those community laws and goals, that there are no moderate or large impacts, even if the area that's, that's bordering it is different. And so, that, you know, that's the, I think, important note to share. In looking at consistency with community character, I think that it's, you know, we lay the, you know, addressing the fact that the, you know, obviously, this is now currently an, you know, largely an undeveloped, open area. It is, it's, the site is a designated brownfield, which will be remediated as part of this project, and that the, the property is surrounded by vacant parcels and boat houses in the city of Rochester, you know, to the west, a marina to the north, a commercial self-storage facility and vacant commercial parcels across Thomas Avenue to the east, and a single-family residential neighborhood to the south, and a cluster of residences on the northeast border along, you know, Thomas Avenue. So, the, the proposed development or project presents a change in the intensity of land use that's going to result in a change in visual character. However, the, it's an intensity of use and scale development that was contemplated in the existing zoning. And so, you know, the site plan calls for trees and green spacing. Again, the topographic, or the topographical differences in the development are going to minimize, you know, views from existing landowners and, you know, even along Thomas Avenue. And I think that ultimately, you know, the, the design of the build, you know, the design of the site can be managed in a way that it, there won't be any long-term, large adverse impacts associated with the project. And again, I would, you know, this is a, obviously, not a short look at the project. When you look at the EA, you know, the EAF, this is, you know, the, this board's charged with really examining the, you know, the full breadth of the project and determining what the impacts are, but based on the fact that it's a brownfield cleanup remediation site, that you're going to improve the condition that's there, and that the site plan has really managed to minimize or mitigate any of the large impacts that could have been generated for, by a project. And so, for that reason, we're not seeing any large adverse impacts, we're seeing anything that's either small or not, or could be mitigated. And so, for that reason, town staff and engineer are recommending a negative declaration. Sorry, I feel like I did a lot of talking. I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to go first, just briefly.
Sure.
I, I would like to commend the town staff, in particular, Ms. Ivers. This has been a, a long process. We've had numerous public hearings. I've got two four-inch notebooks full of materials. I took notes during every one of the speakers that we've had in front of us. The applicant has had to do numerous submissions, resubmissions, and more submissions on top of that. And the documents that are prepared tonight for us, which we've had for several weeks now, thanks to the hard work of the town staff, I, I think it's exceptional, the quality of the work that Ms. Ivers has done to get this in front of us so that we can make it an encapsulated look and, and visit with Seeker tonight, but...
You want to make that a motion?
You're making me blush.
It's not a motion, and I, I just want to make sure that people...
Because I'd like to second it.
Well, thank you.
People realize that this has been a project that's been in front of us for a long time, and for you to be able to take that and break it down and address issues that have been brought up by people in town, professionals, and break it down and make it so clear and concise for us, I personally appreciate it. I'm sure the board does, too.
Well, thank you. And while we're sharing praise, I'd like to give a big shout-out to Michelle Nichols for coordinating the influx of material and information, that this has been quite the, quite the project with respect to submissions and material information, and she's done a phenomenal job of keeping it organized and keeping it in front of you and making sure that you get everything that you need to get. So, I wanted just to share the, the kudos, if you don't mind.
Absolutely, thank you.
There are doctoral theses smaller than this.
That's only one binder. I've got three.
Rich, is there anything else?
Well, and, and just to continue on addressing the actual issues, I mean, I, I know everybody on this board has taken this very personally and taken upon themselves to, to really look and study, because we had a lot of people in the community that had, had issues with various parts of the project. There's been a number of changes that were done by the applicants as a result of the input from the people in the audience. I know nobody on this board has taken this lightly. I've, I've visited there. One of the issues that I thought was very interesting, and we kept hearing it over and over, was about traffic in the area. I've visited on at least three occasions and stayed for quite a while. I sat across the street in the old White Building there and kept tracks from the parking lot of the number of cars that were turning. And I know other people on this board on their own have gone and visited numerous times, so we haven't taken this lightly by any means. And, and I know this is just one step in the process, but we've done a lot of work to get to where we are. Not to mention the people that walk up and talk to me at haramas about it and around the boat docks, and it's, it's a hot-topic issue in town, and people have really wanted to be heard, and they got that chance. Now I'm done, Bertie.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to ask Carrie and the engineers any questions?
I've asked. I truly have asked. I do want to say thank you, though. Part II and III have clarified the information that we've been looking at from Part I for a while, so I appreciate the, the hard work you guys have done for us. And I think that the back and forth has been good with the developer also to mitigate some of the concerns that we've heard from the neighbors. And I also think that we got the, the dust control documents from the developer, and those, from what I've been able to read, seem to answer my questions from the workshop last week. So, I appreciate that, you guys pursuing them and doing that.
Right, and, and this is a site that DEC will be monitoring closely. Any brownfield cleanup program location, BCP site, is monitored very carefully, and no activity or action can be undertaken without the DEC's authorization and, and monitoring. So, I think that's the other aspect of this that's important to reiterate.
And on top of that, I, I would like to say thank you to the developer for including that they're going to perform VOC monitoring as a precaution. That's, I think that's, you know, a lot of what I heard, the feedback that I heard from neighbors was, you know, what's it going to do to my family? You know, I live right next door to there, I'm going to, I'm at risk. You know, obviously, the DEC, you know, requires quite a bit of monitoring, but I appreciate you taking on VOC monitoring as, as a precaution. So, I will add my thanks. I think the narrative really helped a lot, and it addressed all the points, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, with that, providing there's no more questions? We've been here a long time with this, so I just want to make sure. Anybody has any questions?
We still have site plan review to do. There'll be plenty of questions.
I was going to clarify, so that, this is just, this board addressing Seeker, and I think at this point, from a procedural standpoint, the applicant would actually probably go next to the zoning board for that, that's been tabled at the zoning board level as well, and that would probably, once Seeker's been... been addressed or acted upon, then the zoning board is, at that point, can resume their application process. And so, that would likely be the next step for the applicant.
So the last time we talked about that, they're planning on going in front of the zoning board in November?
Correct. So that once they -- the zoning board can't take up the -- take the item off the table until Seeker's been addressed, because they referred the item for Seeker, the purposes of Seeker, to this board. And so, once Seeker's been addressed, then the zoning board is free to take the action back up and would be able to remove it, take it from the table.
So providing whatever happens at the zoning board, it could be back before this board at the November workshop, correct?
Potentially.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Depending on whatever happens.
Sure.
So we're still going to be talking --
If there's no further questions, I'd like to make a motion at this time.
Please.
I don't -- I don't think it's necessary I reread what everybody's heard three times, but I would, based upon the part two and part three, I would like to make a motion that we declare this an unlisted action, negative declaration, under Seeker.
Do we have a second?
Second.
That will take a vote. Everybody who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. That concludes -- we -- now, we took it off the table. Do we have to put it back on the table until after the zoning --
Well, we can -- well, I'll defer to the deputy attorney, because I think --
So the motion this evening was to take it off the table for purposes of Seeker. The public hearing is still tabled, so at a subsequent meeting, after the zoning board of appeals either takes action or gives the developer some feedback, you could reopen the public hearing and take that off the table. So the public -- the public hearing is still tabled?
Okay, correct. Thank you for clarifying that. So at the next -- at the next meeting for the -- for the planning board, you have the option of taking it off the table and opening it up?
With respect to site plan.
For site plan.
And reopening the public hearing.
Review. Okay.
So, just for clarity, it remains a tabled item?
For site plan review.
For site plan. Alan, it's not a public meeting, so I apologize, but --
I can't talk.
A public -- it's not a public hearing.
A public meeting, but not a public hearing.
Excuse me. Public hearing. Excuse me. So unless it's urgent, I would say that we need to --
Well, I just want to request that we do reopen the public hearing for the November meeting, whether or not the zoning board acts.
Oh, you're asking to be on the agenda for the November meeting for public hearing for -- to continue site plan?
Yes.
I leave that to the board and its discretion. My only concern in council to the board would be if the zoning board of appeals requires, you know, more than one meeting to discuss the variances at issue. It may be a futile exercise to come back to this board to discuss the site plan if we don't have feedback from the zoning board.
I kind of agree with Rob. I would prefer that the zoning board rules and then take it off the table at that point in time.
I would defer to my chair.
Anybody disagree?
No.
Will we still have enough time after the zoning board to declare it a public meeting?
I believe so. Because the zoning -- the November zoning board meeting is November 7th.
Right.
The workshop for the planning board is the 14th, and the public hearing is the 28th.
I'm talking to no microphone. The notice would need to go -- Michelle would issue notice, and typically, the newspaper, the agenda needs to be sent on the 10th. So we would -- we would know if the zoning board took action on the 7th, whether to publish it as a public hearing or --
So I'll revise what I said. So if they do take action at the next zoning board meeting, then can we declare it a public meeting?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Excuse me.
It's been a long night.
You make lawyers nervous.
I know.
Getting the jitters here.
And Rob and I are both like --
Yeah.
Rob, I defer to you in terms of a process, if the -- if it can be a contingent, you know, decision by the board, or if they're saying, this is what we want it to be, you know, I don't know how that -- if there -- a vote is needed to -- I'm not sure.
A vote's not needed.
Okay.
I mean, if that's the understanding, is that if the ZBA takes action, or if the ZBA -- the other thing that, you know, I should mention, perhaps the feedback from the ZBA might be, hey, you know, we've got these concerns about density and layout. We want you to engage in a more wholesome discussion with the planning board about the site layout, and that's going to impact our decision. I mean, if something like that occurs, you know, it may be appropriate to come back. But if the zoning board, you know, simply considers the variances, doesn't necessarily discuss the layout or the site plan, and is brooding over the density issue, you know, that was my recommendation, that it may not be worth coming back to this board at that stage if they're really contemplating the variances and the nitty-gritty of the variances, without it having any impact on site plan.
Okay, so I think you're telling us that we can?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll know that if a decision is reached by zoning board, or the zoning board is looking for more feedback from the planning board, that we'll put it -- post it as a public hearing on the agenda, correct?
Public hearing, not a public meeting. If it is a public meeting --
Correct. So no matter what, it's going to be here for a public meeting.
Be without.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Well, first, I just want to make sure that the next item remains tabled.
The next item does remain tabled. The applicant's engineer are revisiting some of the report-related items with respect to geotech, and my understanding is that they're still working on looking at the design and the geotech issues that were addressed by their engineer. So they're still looking at it. And as soon as that changes and they provide any additional information, I'll be sure to make sure we get it to you for review and consideration.
Okay, so I think that takes care of all the cases that were on our agenda. Before we go for a motion of adjournment, there was two sets of minutes that were distributed at the workshop, so could we address the minutes from August 22nd? If somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the minutes of the regularly-scheduled meeting of the planning board of the town of Aronacote held in Aronacote Town Hall, 1280 Titus Avenue, Monroe County, on Monday, August 22nd, 2016, at 7:00 p.m., be approved as submitted.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to also say aye, even though I wasn't present, but I did watch it.
Okay.
The second set of minutes, can I get a motion, please?
I would like to move the minutes of a regularly-scheduled meeting of the planning board of the town of Aronacote, held at the Aronacote Town Hall, 1280 Titus Avenue, Monroe County, New York, on Monday, September 26th, 2016, at 7:00 p.m., approved as submitted.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Epstein?
Epstein, from August 22nd.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't ask for the Epstein.
I'm giving it to Michelle as soon as I can.
Okay, and with that, anybody want to make a motion?
Motion, of course.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, everybody. It was a long journey on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You made that painless.